Please rise for the Plenarlegions. Boss?
Present.
Pivia? Graham?
Here.
Hughes?
Here.
Frye?
Present.
Schroller?
Here.
Thromb?
Barnes?
Here.
Five, we have six. All right, thank you all for coming. The first item is the approval of minutes for the November 13th meeting. Does anyone have any amendments?
Yes, I do, Mayor. On page three of six, where CM Boss noted that there will be a planning meeting-
Wait, where are you at, I'm sorry. Three of six, where at?
Three, three of six.
Oh, on the hearings, okay. Are you with me, Cindy? Okay.
Okay. Beginning with 7:00 PM, applicable to proposed changes to commercial zones beginning one-half block south of Broadway.
Okay. Beginning one-half, for that, okay. Beginning one-half.
And I've got it written out for Cindy.
So, 7:00 o'clock PM, applicable to the new proposed commercial zones beginning one-half block south of Broadway. Does that sound right?
Yes. And Austin and I don't agree on this, but I'd like to present it on page two of six, number eight, line three.
Two of six, line three, okay.
Where it says amendments in section-
Are you at the very top paragraph?
Um...
On number eight, I'm sorry.
Yes, number eight.
Okay.
Number eight, line three. Amendments, where it says amendments, in section five, number one, changing house to housing, and inserting minimum before assessed. Section five builds housing, and inserting minimum before assessed.
Now, does that adjust five to three A as well? Didn't we have changes on the backside to housing and minimum as well?
That's what she just said.
She said five one A, but didn't, wasn't it five on the second page there, Darlene, at the top?
Um...
Right there?
Yes, that's, uh-huh, that's under line three.
Five three A? I'm sorry, what?
Section five, five, I guess I should say, um, number three. Section five, number three.
Section five, number three.
Oh.
Okay, just leave it at that?
Yeah.
Okay. And you'll get those exact wording to Cindy?
Yes.
Did anybody else have an amendment? All right, now we entertain a motion to approve as amended.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
As presented?
Well, as-
As amended?
As amended.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh. The second set of minutes is the special meeting on November 19th. Does anybody have any amendments? And there's, entertain a motion as presented.
Don't move.
Sir.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh. All right, public comments? There's not very many people out there, but if there's anybody out there that would like to share, and it's not on the agenda, you can share for five minutes if you give your name, your address, and your word.
I like where we're going.
Okay, we're going, going once, okay. On the rail trail north, we'll move on to business and discussion items. What do you know about that? There's no pages.
Um, the Charlie Phillips came in and just said that they wanted to talk about it, and somebody be here.
Okay, we'll move on. If they happen to come, while we're still on business and discussion items, we'll discuss it, otherwise we'll move to this next meeting. All right, the next item is the Marysville Township fire contract was rejected. There's no pages in that as well. I recommend that we have a meeting with the Marysville Township Board and talk to them about it. When we, are you guys all in favor of that? Consensus of council? Okay. So consensus, we will meet. Cindy, you want to put that on your agenda to schedule that with the Township Board, please? Okay, the next item is the Marshall County Veterans Electric Bills. It's on page nine. You know, I think it's about, what did we approve last year, Cindy? Do you know, forty-five something up to fifty dollars?
Fifty-six. Fifty, or sixty, fifty-five or sixty, I don't remember. They've hit right in there. That must be about sixty.
Must be up to sixty, anyway. Up to sixty, the amount, that's what we've been paying. I think it's a small price for our Veterans Memorial. Are you guys okay?
We've made no improvements that we've asked them to.
I know, but it's still, I appreciate that it brings people to Marysville and our veterans.
I do too. I mean, what, are we just making tooth flips? I mean, we kind of, haven't we already kicked it once? I mean-
This is the second. This will be the third time.
I'm okay with keeping doing it, but we need to put teeth in it somehow, I mean, I think it's a big ask.
Well, I think, I think, you know, they're struggling with the roof, but I think we need to keep paying the electricity, and, I mean, we can call them and have a meeting. Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, yeah.
Have a chat?
I mean, yeah.
Okay, so how about if we entertain a motion to pay up to sixty dollars for the next year, and then we'll make efforts to meet with some people from the Veterans Memorial and try to decide if we can proceed with some. And I, and I wanted to say, if we do this, you know, there might be something, they come back and want us to help with on cost too, but I'm just throwing that out there. So to continue paying electricity, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we continue paying the electricity up to sixty dollars, and then we'll try to set up, and then, and then we'll set up a meet, try to set up a meeting with the committee, and I know they're working really hard, you know, trying to do some fundraising or something. It's been a real struggle for them, so.
So, do you think, what committee would that be? You want it Parks and Rec? Is it Park?
Uh, probably.
Parks, we'll do Parks and Rec.
Did you want to do that for six months or a year?
Why don't we do it for six months and see where we are in six months? Well, let's do it for a year, because we've always taken, yeah, let's do it for a year, so we don't have to reassess it, yeah.
We give them a year to work on it. Hopefully over the summer, they'll come back with something.
Yeah.
Honestly, because Dennis Mason's, you know, representing him, and he does a lot of volunteering.
I know.
And he does-
He did all our speaker systems, so I hate to-
Yeah.
Okay, so, meeting with the Parks and Rec Committee, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh, all right. Next item is the RX sidewalk agreement. Cindy, did you take these pictures, or Austin?
I had Butch, I had Butch take them.
Butch taking them?
That's who gets all our pictures.
Okay. So, I know you went over and looked at it.
Yeah, I talked to him.
Anyway, I could not find the letter, because I've deleted a lot of my emails recently, and I lost the letter from RX that sent this. But what they want to do, as this picture shows, the monument they want to leave, they just want to take the brick around it away. Obviously, they want to keep the squirrel, leave the back, take the brick away, and the third brick there that's on their property. I think what, what they have, since they have three items on their sidewalk anyway, and they always have flowers and stuff, I don't think you're going to notice that there's no brick on that specific sidewalk.
I think it's a slippery slope, though. I mean, there'll be other people who will ask for specific concessions. If we're going to be consistent, I think we should be consistent. I went down and looked at it, because, I mean, I kind of agree. There's the two of them that have items on them, which it's a little less obvious, but then the third one, it is more obvious.
Yeah, I guess, you know, also, you have a business that is, you know, has been in there, we want to keep them on Main Street.
But I don't feel like they've been really friendly about this ask either, which hasn't exactly-
Well, I think they're frustrated, because they've come in several times and requested discussions on it, it never happened before, so.
No, they didn't like my answer.
Okay, they didn't like-
And they haven't come to counsel, I mean.
But, I, I, we went around and asked people on trees, and we didn't put a tree where they didn't want a tree, and now you're going to make people put brick where they don't want brick?
I'll say the same thing. I tell anybody who didn't like something in their neighborhood, was it there when you bought it? I mean, does everybody else have it? Yeah, I mean, I don't have, I've asked some other business owners around downtown if they concerned about the bricks and slickness, because I understand the idea that they could be slick, but I haven't, nobody else seems to be too concerned about it.
Well, then no one else will remove theirs, then, it's perfect.
Well, but, what I'm saying is, well, somebody else doesn't want, you know, something else that's pre-existing. Well, I don't, I, this parking area, it's kind of slick, I want to do concrete mat, or I want to do this, or, it's a concession. It's a slippery slope.
Well, the brick was put in at the same time the streetlights were put in, it was part of that project.
Can you do stained, stained stamped concrete?
Well, that, would that make any difference?
If you don't seal, the color will go away. I mean, the stained concrete over here on the 400 block, I understand.
You mean, so maybe on that third one, put stamped concrete in that third one?
Stained and stamped.
Because the first two, you're not going to notice.
Stained and stamped, so it looks like brick.
Stained and stamped. How do you guys feel about that? On third, and go ahead and let them remove the two on the square.
I don't know, I mean, the streets are brick themselves, and they're going to be very slick. They're always slick.
I think the brick, the style of brick of the streets is actually slicker, because it's got like a smooth finish, whereas these bricks have kind of a textured finish.
Well, but the problem too is, if you've got bricks, let's say one settles down, and you scoop across the top, whatever is in that valley stays there, then it freezes, and then, I mean, it's, it's going to be a bad spot, where you're going to have to throw a lot of salt down.
If stamped-
And I can see what they're saying, but it does look-
If stamped stamped concrete can look, like, kind of blend in, then I, you know, that'd be okay compromising mine, but.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I feel that it's, they own the building, and the building was like it was. The bricks got added maybe before they were the owners, but now that they want to pay and pay their half, if they'd like to have it without the bricks, to eliminate the problem of shoveling snow around your hitching posts and all that, and the handicap people and stuff that use the drugstore, if they want to pay, if they want to pay their half, I think we ought to let them have it the way they want it. I don't think the town should designate what, they're not trying to destroy the looks of our town.
They're trying to improve it with-
They're trying to improve it and stand business. I think we should allow them to do what they want to do.
It was, though, a project, and, you know, was to be consistent.
And, I mean-
And along with the streetlights.
If they were paying, and I, I'm fully in favor of us paying half of this, don't, don't take it that way, but if they were paying for all of it, I think it'd be an argument, but we're paying for half of it, and our half of it's to make sure we get-
We just pay half of the material. We pay half of the material.
Well, half the material, I think part of the reasoning behind that is to improve it, but also partially so that we can keep consistency, and we can have our voice.
I don't think that's why we do it. That's to encourage people to do sidewalks.
Really?
I think it is.
Oh, I think it's both.
Because we pay half on all residential areas and stuff.
Well, right, but we also make them go to our standards. They can't put in any sidewalk now.
Right.
And this is, part of standards is consistency. So, I mean, I look at it as all a good. I'm in favor of us paying half of it, but I think if we can compromise, and they, you know, do stamped and stained, it keeps the consistency, but it removes their worry about slickness, I think Gina's right.
It would still give you, but keep the look, it would just be a different material.
And that technology wasn't-
In that one, in the third one? In the third one?
I'd say all of them. I'd say just keep it consistent while you're at it, do it all, because if they're going to redo all the concrete anyway, it wouldn't be much harder to do two more than one.
It would keep that, all the way down, all the way down the main street, that look.
So, do you want, do, so somebody want to make a motion as far as what we want to counter offer with?
And who does, who does this sign belong to that has this funny?
I don't know.
I mean, I mean, I know, I know they did it several years ago, because when we had Schrader Auto Parts, our name was on the backside, and somebody came around and sold.
Well, I don't think they're going to take it out.
No, I know, but the base of it is, is kind of crumbly, I think, so, I mean, it kind of needs repaired.
Oh.
It needs a new base under it, probably, when we're doing the concrete.
I think so. But I don't know, I don't know who, I don't know, I don't know who sold the, we were, Danny and I were talking about that. We don't know who sold the advertising on it, because there's, people's names are around the base of it, and it's kind of deteriorated a little bit, so I don't know if anybody has any idea.
Would it have been the funny express, Barnes? Folks, how many years ago do you figure that was, Diane?
Well, we bought the store in ninety-eight, so, sometime after that, sometime, sometime around 2000, somewhere in there.
I guess I would say, I don't know, if Austin or whomever wants to talk to them and say that, hey, we're, we would like to make a compromise here, but, you know, I think they understand we want to maintain consistency, but we also do care about their customers and their being there, and see if they'd be amenable to that as a compromise, doing the stamped and stained concrete. And I, and I'm still okay with them removing them along Eighth Street, I'm just not as concerned about it on the side street.
So, that's what we approved last time, was the hitching post and the brick on Eighth Street.
On Eighth, right.
But we didn't, we said to try to keep them on Broadway.
I don't know who, did they, they probably haven't chosen a contractor yet.
They had, they got two bids.
Okay.
They had two bids, but they're not going to do it till spring anyway, early spring.
So, there's some time.
But if we're going to take, but if we're going to take that up, we should redo the base on that, on that.
Well, wouldn't you say, we should redo the base, Diane?
Well, somebody, well, somebody should, if we, if we can find out who put it up originally, or whatever, I mean.
And the concrete contractor, maybe it wouldn't be significantly more for them to form up a base-
If we couldn't redo the base somehow.
And pour it all in one.
Somebody, or-
Pour it the same-
Is it a concrete base or a marble base?
It's like limestone, isn't it?
I think, I think it's just, I think it's just a concrete or limestone base or something. The engraving's on, on the, if the engraving's not on it, it's just a limestone base.
Well, Diane, why don't you look into that?
Okay.
That's a good project for you.
Okay.
Since your name's on it. Your name's on it.
I will, if, if we're going to do that, I mean, it should be fixed while we're at it, so.
Okay, are you going to talk to Karras and Sam? Okay, so we'll just move that forward, make that, make that counter offer?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a consensus to do the counter with everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. The chamber agreement. I, you know, I read through this, and when we wrote this chamber agreement up, we had the Finance and Admin Committee met with the Chamber Board to make sure we agreed with what should take place in the agreement. With the new chamber director, I think, I think we should go ahead and go over this agreement with her before we approve an agreement that she might not agree with anymore. The main thing being, that A-frame sign, I don't believe they're using, and I really don't, I don't know of anything of these keeping records, quarterly reports. So, I would like to defer this to the FNAE Committee and meet with Jennifer and bring back something that we know she'll agree with.
Well, and their board.
Excuse me?
Jennifer and their board.
Well, I think it was Jennifer and the president last year, so, is it President Jada, or is it?
Tammy.
Oh.
Tammy Selajic used to be.
Patty Holly.
Joe Kroger.
Patty Holly.
Oh, it's Patty Holly?
Will be now.
Okay, so anyway, are you guys okay with-
Oh, Patty is, oh.
With meeting with them and bringing back something that we know they'll agree to? Okay.
What's James Kroger?
So, will you make that meeting too?
He was a past president. I mean, he's just-
Joey Kroger.
James Kroger was the one that came and talked to us, but I think Patty's the new one coming in.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so, you'll do that, Cindy, set up that meeting? Okay, moving right along, I think this next one we can approve. It's the Chamber dues. It kind of, it's from Patty Holly, and shows what our amount would be, the 3.42 for the year based on our employees.
Same.
Entertain a motion to approve as presented?
Move to approve as presented.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Six oh, all right. And the alarm system, and that's why, Chief, Chief, are you here for the alarm system, or you're just sitting back?
I'm not here to present.
Is Sharon or-
I have questions of why they need it.
Sharon or Ralph, are you going to present about the?
I will.
Okay.
I can talk about the system itself, but I'm not presenting.
Thanks for coming out on this icy night.
Another nice night.
Yeah, hopefully your street was cleared.
Yeah, it was pretty good.
Praise the Lord. Okay.
Some time ago, we had a proposal, brought before the Advisory Board of the Kestner Block, to provide an alarm system, because there were some hill observers, some men observed, looking at the zinc statuary in the yard, and as I understand it, one of the, some of the bolts were removed from the base of the statuary, so that the statue couldn't move, but there was still one bolt holding it, so it isn't gone, it's still there, but it was moved. And there has been vandalism in New Kestner Yard, some of the, deer's lost their antlers, which is one thing that I've observed, and so the possibility of alarm system has come up. There were alarm systems in the building, motion detectors, sometimes those that are not operating now, and there are a lot of valuable items in the Kestner Block that exceed the cost of alarm system by far, so. An alarm system was caught, brought up, and I don't know what you have exactly, I think it's probably the same.
I think we got everything that we had for the Advisory Board, yeah.
Well, what this alarm system would consist of is, we have a proposal from SEI for this alarm system. There's probably a lot of different kinds, and I don't really know a lot about any of them, but we have a proposal for this alarm system. It's a, I don't know if you have this page or not, but it shows, it shows the camera locations. This is for the-
That one we don't have.
What?
That one we do not have.
Don't have, don't have. That's, what it shows is, I think, five cameras that would-
Oh, it kind of does. It's our green, it's, it's green, it's on page-
Eighteen.
Thirty-five. It's on page thirty-five, and he's talking, his is black, but ours is the green, it's showing the overlapping of the exterior cameras.
Correct.
Yeah, so ours are the green overlaps. Sorry.
No, I was wondering, you talk about the alarm system, the outside camera system is not an alarm system. The alarm system is only on the inside. The audio and the video on the outside are totally separate system from the same company.
I should have said it, the security system. But these cameras are infrared. As I understand it, they take intermittent pictures, I don't know, still pictures basically that are at an interval, I don't know how long exactly, but they'll, they'll take them 24 hours a day, and they'll continue this and do that for 30 days. So, makes it, what we have is a system of anything that happens in the yard. This is laid out to cover all the areas, which is shown by the gray areas here, there, where the-
The only thing is that, now this one's saying four megapixel-
Yes, the system we're seeing now is a four-megapixel. We talked to the gentleman who put this together, and we have, I have pictures of the different, we're going with the four. Eight-megapixel 4K camera, which is twice, he showed a picture, I can give a say a blurry license plate, where I got a crystal clear license plate with this type of camera. It was a little higher, but well worth your money, I mean, no, no, we're spending money and not being able to use the evidence if we can't see it. And they did say the cones are smaller. If we had to add another camera, we could, but he thinks we can still get the same coverage so far with it, because if you look at the top, my big thing was, on the top camera, you get part of the staircase coming in. I think you need a camera on that staircase. Have you ever walked down that staircase, as slick as marble or whatever it is? If you ever get somebody want to fake an injury, that camera will catch up.
That one at the very top of the front entrance?
Yeah, if, if there's an area that, if anything, I think would need a camera, depending upon when they set these up, because the primary role is to watch the statuary. But catching that entrance of walking down the steps for the public is a key thing as well.
So, the camera that's there now is really pointing to the statuary on the right side?
All the cameras are on the statuary. They set the southwest, it catches under the vestibule coming from the summer kitchen to the house. It is watching that whole back area that you, with the cones you can see.
So you think you want to add another to the step?
Maybe, they want to install them first to see, you may not need to.
Okay.
But he knows the cone gets smaller with the higher megapixel camera.
What if that camera could be moved to the west side of the stair? And pick up anything-
It is possible.
Oh, that's true.
Like I say, the first major point is the statuary, but then we'll, we'll, we'll see on the stairs. That's just a lot of building matter.
So the key thing was, it was approved camera, they're aimed at the statuary, and they keep it for 30 days, so we have to notice something's missing within a 30-day period.
Now, these 30 days, we have a terabyte camera system in town right now, on a place that we have to install, it's 30 days. I notice this is a four-terabyte system, which they can probably record a lot longer.
Oh, okay.
But then-
But they guarantee 30 days?
Yes, eight megapixels, doesn't change that.
No, no. And the, the monthly fee for the camera system is, they constantly, they're not watching the cameras, they send a signal to make sure the camera and the system's working. If something goes down, then they notify us. But they are not recording, their recorder will be on the hard drive, we have storage over there.
So it's important that everything is observed every day to find out if there's anything missing, basically.
You know, it's just like before, when we store the hard drive, the other one we have in town right now, we actually have inside of it a metal box, it's like eighty bucks, and it locks, and it's made of steel, so if something breaks in, it'll destroy it.
You guys have any questions on the outside system? Okay, then you want to talk about the inside system, then?
The inside system, you have this sheet there.
We, yeah, we have this.
That's made up of both of the detectors. It has a quarter-mounted motion detectors, eight of those, and they're marked in their locations on the, on the drawing with a circle, with S in a circle, in a bracket that goes in the corner of rooms, here, 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 so there are eight of those cameras. There's also a motion detector here in the, in the breezeway, that I didn't notice before. Saw this.
It's not in the breezeway, it's in the summer kitchen, it'll be above the doors.
In the, in the building itself?
Yes.
Okay.[1586.73] Okay.
That's for one of the older ones that is now that was put in the same location.
But there is another, another motion detector that is not part of the system out there.
Yeah. Did, did, did I tell you that also, that, from that meeting, they, that light is burned out, right? And they wanted the lights in the gas lamps?
Motion light?
Yeah, that motion detector needs to be replaced in the, in the back of the breezeway at the Kester. And then those two gas light fixtures need to have lights replaced. That was from the meeting, sorry.
They haven't been there for a long time, in the, in the gas light fixtures.
Yeah, they just thought it would be nice to have those lights on.
If you do it, do it before they install the cameras, because they'll adjust the infrareds at the time, because it changes your infrared broadcast if you already have a light in a certain area.
And so, we have, are those LED there on those gas lights?
I'm not sure.
Okay, see, because you want to run them all the time, right? Is that what they talked about?
They could be, yeah.
They wanted to run them all the time?
Be a lot cheaper.
Just at night? Are they timed? Do we have a timer on them?
They have a timer.
Oh, okay.
Well, you can put an eye on, come, come on and down.
Okay. So anyway, they just want to get those two, three things going fixed. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The intrusion, shown on the bottom of the sheet, quarter-mounted motion detectors, eight of those, door contacts like at the main entry door in the front, and there's probably.
The northeast vestibule.
Northeast vestibule area.
We did not put it on the interior door, just because they spent, what, $12,000 doing that room?
Yes, or something like that.
Aren't there's anything in there? Except there is a motion detector in the corner.
And an intrusion keypad back here where the computers are now.
It looks like an iPad that'll sit just on the stand itself, and that's where they can run their phone.
Operating the system.
Or whoever has permission can run it from their smartphone as well. Turn it on, turn it off, or you can set it to turn on, turn off itself. Say you have somebody trying to want to run the system, and you open at 1:00, you can shut the system off at 10:01, and it'll read it itself at a certain time.
Now, were you, was this, the first call was to dispatch on this one?
What's that?
When there is a motion detector, if there is an alarm, it goes straight?
You can set up a call wherever you want. My thing is, call dispatch first, because it gets us in route, and if you want a, say, key holder called second, they can do that as well.
Okay.
Or you're going to have a key holder anyway, when you hit 911 system up there, you have to have a key holder for the business anyway.
Okay.
Because we will not lock your business if there's a key holder there, it'll remain open.
I think it's probably a good idea. I noticed, I was looking up on the Kester block and, well, that's for the whole block, but I noticed our insurance for the Kester block was $10,000 for the whole block, though. But, anyway.
We did check on the insurance, because you're a city that does not, most of your insurance is subject.
Sometimes it does.
Sometimes, if you're residential, then we're not a city anymore.
So when we were at the advisory board meeting, the foundation was going to possibly cover the installation charges. Sharon, did they agree to that?
Yeah.
For both?
Yeah.
Do you want to come to the podium, so?
And, and the foundation pay for the system also?
They're asking for the city just to pay the monthly fee.
Yeah, so the, so we had left at the advisory that we recommend the city pay the ongoing fees, if the foundation was willing to pay the installation charges for both systems.
And the cost of the system.
And cost and installation, yeah.
It's a total of $10,000.
I noticed that.
So, so the foundation did agree to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Well, that's very gracious. So, since this contract, I talked to Craig about this contract, because we have a contract for installation for one group, and then we have a contract for ongoing maintenance with the city, that we should have two separate contracts?
One for the motion detectors, one for the?
Foundation. No, one for the foundation, for the installation part, because it says, you know, this, like on page 22, it says installation charges, that would be the, with the Kester House Foundation. The reoccurring charges would be the City of Marysville.
Yes.
Why couldn't the foundation just pay the city for what they paid to install it?
A reimbursement.
Just like reimburse the city for, you know, we pay for it, they reimburse us, then you don't have to change.
And then we can say, okay, but I think we need to change this, this has made out to the Kester House Museum, and this should be the City of Marysville? Because all the museum expenses come out of the city.
Yeah, this is just the first draft, and I mean, Austin and Chamberlain needs to run it with some demand.
So what it would be, it would be $51 for the, per month, for the, which one is that, the interior?
That's the interior, because that's a constantly monitored, 24-hour monitor.
And then the $26 a month would be for the exterior.
Again, this says plus tax.
We don't pay tax.
Okay, you don't pay tax. That's no problem.
I'm sorry.
He said this whenever we signed our contract.
$25. So.
These prices that they gave in here also didn't want to be taxed.
Correct. Yes, it's plus tax. You're aware of that.
So you guys have any questions about this system? I sat through a couple of meetings, so. Do you think it's a good idea? I think it's a good idea. There's a lot of value. And, and all that restoration would be horrible if somebody went in and damaged it, break my heart, as well as the foundation people.
Well, there's just no way, you know, we got four square miles, and there's certain times I have one down, we can watch that interior, and set that wall, it's just impossible.
SEI is a company we used for the bank.
So you know?
They have a lot of clients around, so Blue Valley themselves use that for their own buildings over there for commercial as well.
So we can go ahead and approve the contract, changing it to the City of Marysville, and I guess, continue on receiving the monies from the foundation? We'll get the monies, and then we'll sign it? Does that sound good to you guys?
Well, it would have to be, would it have to be installed before we pay you?
Well, I think it said 50% upfront.
50% upfront, and then you pay the other 50% after it's installed. But we, they won't even have time to put us on the schedule to get installed till the middle of January.
Okay. Is that all right with you, Sharon?
Yeah.
That's good.
I thought, yeah, you said reimburse and start thinking that would come after.
I think this, is it good for 30 days?
It's good for 30 days. I told him we had council meetings, he said just to let him know if we need time.
Okay. I did have Craig look at it, and he didn't have any concerns other than being the City of Marysville. And I guess we should go ahead and have him change that to the eight-megapixel, as long as they're changing it.
The eight-megapixel should be one on the, see, there's two different bids, but the eight-megapixel should already be a megapixel.
I thought you were saying.
He does, he does.
Oh, yeah, it does say that.
Do math does.
Yeah, okay.
So it is eight, I thought at the meeting the other night you said we were going up to five megapixels.
No, four, four is what they bid. The next one we want up is eight slash 4K, because we thought 4K and eight was different. It's the same camera. Who buys it? It's very clear.
But it went up to, from 8,000 to 10,000.
No, it went up to 8,000 something, just for the camera system, but both up together, just a little over 10,000, if I'm correct.
Yeah, the total was over 10,000.
Wasn't it?
Now, the eight.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five hundred, and what's over 17?
Seventeen.
Seventeen thirty.
It's 10,250.
Well, over 10,000.
So, if you guys are okay with this, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to.
Now, I'm asking a question first.
Yes.
What is the city paying outright for this now?
We would pay the reoccurring charges.
The what?
The reoccurring charges, the monthly.
Monthly payments.
Maintenance, yeah.
Right.
And the foundation would pay the installation.
And the cost of the system.
And the cost of the system.
Okay.
So it costs us about $76 to 12, almost like $900 a year, but I think it's definitely worth it to keep an eye on the property.
It's pretty cheap insurance to me.
And I think it says that you can, they give us some note, I think it stays at rate for at least a year, and then if there's some adjustment for the maintenance. Well, I thought it said, the maintenance, it's at least for a year.
Maybe it's different for each system, too.
Yeah, it says a period for five years.
For a period of five years.
You know what I think it is, is if the FCC comes in and increases something, let's see.
Yeah. Pretty bad for a period of five years.
But our insurance won't go down because we put this in.
I was for a call maybe to send it.
They called the underwriter? No.
Is customers' duties to pay increased cost number 12, notwithstanding the contrary of the federal statute or regulation, blah, 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 they'll pass that on to us, but otherwise it's said.
I just like the TV. You can increase, you can increase.
Yeah.
All right, move to approve the purchase of the interior and exterior security systems for the Kester block. One at $1,730, the other at, 7,800, no, 8,522. Subject to reimbursement, with the city picking up the monthly service fees for both systems, in a total of $76.
Subject to reimbursement from the Kester.
From the Kester, yes.
I'll second that motion.
The city paying the, for both systems? Did you say both systems?
Correct.
Okay. You seconded? Do you guys have any other discussion? Obviously, it's going to come out of the Kester block fund, right? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think so. All right, so you'll get us a new contract, or who's?
Well, we will also put the gentleman in contact with Austin, and then we'll contact with the city.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Thanks for all your work. Thank you, foundation. That's a very generous gift. Do we send thank yous for stuff like that? We probably should. That's true, foundation. All right. Number eight is code enforcement on page 36. I assume this came from Butch?
He just asked.
All right. And it's to, he's, you know, I told him if there's anything, anything he wants to update that we need to make ordinances for, to present it to us, so he did. And this is about right-ofways. You guys okay?
Is he more, is he more worried about, as far as, I know we've talked about campers and things between the sidewalk and the street. I presume that's where the greatest concern is, is people parking, parking equipment.
Yeah, he has, he has vehicles, trailers, campers on the city right-ofway.
Because then later he mentions alleyways, and I didn't know which, if it's.
Some issues that they can't drive through the alley because they're parking too far into the alley, which.
Which I know.
We don't have anything in our ordinances now to prohibit that.
Well, yeah, because it's ours. You can't, you can't. You can't park there, but.
So he just wants to make sure that we include alleyways as, so they're not blocked.
My concern with that.
Impede access.
Is that the impeding access thing, but as far as people parking partially in alleys, or, you know, all those property lines are kind of crazy. I came in and actually talked to Austin about, I mean, because they move on the same block, and there's a lot of people who have parking that partially sticks in, it doesn't impede the alley per se, and I think a lot of it's being good neighbors and being smart people will remove a lot of problems. But, so as far as the, if you're going to look at anybody who's at all in the right-ofway, that starts to become kind of a gray area, and I'd be hesitant.
Yeah, I think he said impede access through the alleyways, so.
Yeah, trash trucks. I'm not here to speak to that.
And our, and our main concern with alley, with any access is ambulance and fire trucks.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll be right, honest, and upfront. I intentionally have a trailer that's part on my property and part in the alley. I've worked with temps.
Do you impede the process?
No, because I've worked with temps, as far as I went, I made sure they were comfortable with, because they run trash trucks and the UPS truck rounds and everything up my alley. Fine with that, but it was to kind of slow it a little, because we had people clipping the sidewalk, which is three feet from my house, literally three feet from my house. So it's, my kids walk along there, kind of adjusted, calm.
Yours is a safety measure.
Traffic calming device. So, I mean, I don't have to park there, I do it intentionally to try to, so I get a little sensitive about such things.
We're not out measuring property lines or anything like that, unless it's really necessary. As long as an ambulance, a trash truck, or fire truck gets in there, we have no.
And I understand that. And, I mean, I'm glad Butch is out there busting heads at work.
Working hard.
But.
He's doing a good job.
He is doing a good job. I just wanted to make sure that was, that was in there.
So, is it consent of council to go ahead and make the ordinance as he recommended?
Oh, good. Administration and finance work on that.
To draft the ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
Should we ask Cindy to see if she can find one from another city?
Mm-hmm.
Can you try to find?
Or several, you can find several.
Find examples for us to tweak?
I can try.
Okay.
Because I have to find the UTV one, too.
Yeah. Speaking of the UTV one, are you working on that, to do the initial draft of it?
I'm assuming.
Okay. So UTV as well? Okay.
But not at this moment.
You, if you do a list search like Debbie used to do, she might, you might have somebody send it to you.
She told me there's one out there on that.
On the League's website? Okay. For UTVs as well as right-ofways?
UTVs only, without ATVs and golf carts. There should be.
Oh, okay, well then, yeah, great.
I hope.
Say that again, please.
She said that on the League's website, there's a sample ordinance for allowing UTVs on city streets. So she's going to look that up. She's also going to look on the League to see if she can find right-ofways as a sample ordinance. Okay?
Okay, because when you were talking about that same thing, this is a different subject, but I kind of think that we're getting too harsh with the, there's a lot of people here in town that go back and forth to the golf cart course, and I don't know what the golf cart, it isn't as, it isn't that dangerous as it is. There's a lot of people that are feeling that we're, we're leaving them out if we don't include them. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Well, I can, you know, or you, we can make one golf cart route, which is not, which is North Street, which happens to be where Landell travels all the time, but, I mean, I'm just saying, if you're going to make a route, that's the only logical route for a golf cart to go, would be North Street.
Well, I don't think we should leave those folks out of the deal, if there's four or five of them here in town that would.
What about ATVs then, though, too? I mean, there's at least that many ATVs around, and we're leaving them out.
On the golf course?
No, but as far as on the public streets.
I thought ATV has roll factor issues.
Golf, you not seen a golf cart rollover?
I think the golf carts is mostly crossing the highway, going to the.
Gas station?
Gas station is the danger of that with all the traffic out there, I think is the problem.
There's just no meat to a golf cart.
Well, that's, I mean, we opened it up when we said, you know, off-road vehicles.
Well, I made that, I mean.
We stipulated that.
I stipulated against it, but I didn't leave it open.
But they're off-road vehicles.
But they're, but they're safety things. Well, you know what? Tell them that they're welcome to come to council, because we had several people come to council regarding the UTVs.
Mm-hmm.
And tell them we have safety concerns, so maybe they can come and enlighten us.
I just, I'd heard a couple comments that way, and I was just, wanted to bring it to everybody's attention.
Okay.
To me, the big issue is safety. It's not so much omitting anybody or leaving anybody out, it's a safety issue of it, so.
Chief left. Okay. All right, so we're going to draft up that ordinance, Cindy's going to work on that. And that is it. Again, thank you, Butch, for all your work. Notice in hearings, do we have anything?
Oh, you attended the hearing on the, on the new proposed changes for the zoning?
That's true. It's in the, it's in the, it's in the, being published, right, Cindy? The hearing?
It, it has to go through this, this whole meeting for protest period yet.
Yeah, so they, they.
They told me next meeting.
The planning commission didn't meet, and they approved it to allow for those two zonings in those specific areas. So now they're waiting for the protest period, and then they'll bring it to council the next meeting.
And as I understand it, the hearing, none of the 140 recipients of the letters came forward or any of the business people?
No, we had, Chamber came and talked, Jennifer Duffy came and spoke on behalf of Chamber, and Michelle Weitzel came and spoke on behalf of Main Street, and Wayne Cruzy came as well and spoke. But those were the only people that showed up at the hearing. All right, so we'll have the meeting next, in the next meeting. All right, thank you. So the next thing is the consent agenda, and I just wanted to talk about these employee gift certificates real quick. You know, the last, I went back as far as four years, and they, they were always $50 per full-time and $25 for part-time and seasonal. That's what it's always been for four years. I did call the commissioners and said, hey, do you guys give out gift certificates? And they said, no. And then I called the school, I sent an email to Mr. Mullins and said, hey, do you guys give gift certificates? And he said, no, but they did give $10 Chamber bucks during National Education Week. So, and then I talked to Bob, and I said, did you guys have a party last year? And he said, no, it never did get planned. So, so they didn't have a party or get gift certificates last year.[1642.12] certificates last year, and we are having a party, so, and $50 is historically what we've always given. We are, we are not a business, we are a governing body using tax dollars.
I'd like to think our staff may be, maybe a little bit happier than some of the county staff, I don't think a lot of county staff feel like they get treated that well, so I don't think comparing us to them is necessarily very fair.
Well, I'm just saying, those, they use tax dollars for their salaries, we use tax dollars for our salaries.
Maybe.
Yeah.
I'll like the idea that we're, I mean, this is kind of one of those little fringe benefits that we can indirectly support, you know, help a lot of, help them, you know, spend it in our community. We, we can't always compete on everything with the private sector, unemployment's at historic lows, we're, I think, lucky to have a lot of staff we have, and I don't think it's an unfair reward.
Why did it increase?
In the past, did we?
Oh, wait, wait, she asked a question, you couldn't hear her. She said, why did it increase?
It hasn't changed in the last, 2003 is as far back as I could go and it had been $50.
But we didn't always have a Christmas party.
Right.
Which, you spent almost $5,000 on a Christmas party.
When did we know?
Before Austin came, we had it at lunchtime, we didn't have it at an event.
Right, but we had Christmas.
Yeah, but we had a luncheon here at the city.
Right, which is true, yeah, yeah, but we've always had a Christmas party.
And $50 in 2003, according to the US inflation calculator, would be $70 now.
Why did it increase?
And my question was, did we prorate, like if somebody's been here for a full year, we gave them the full amount, but we never prorated?
We can, but we never have.
Changed, because I've always been told if we had a recommendation to change something to bring in.
You probably should have brought it to the FNA committee first to discuss it. What do you guys want to do?
I'm, I'm in favor of it, I think it's a nice notion for us to do that for our staff, so, I mean, I, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? I don't know what the vote was. Did you all approve? Was it all?
Six oh.
Was it six oh?
Six oh is what it was.
All right, all right. Appropriations ordinance, we have a slight amendment to it. So, yeah, the one to Darrell Rohr, instead of prepaying $20,500, we're paying, prepaying $5,000, so the ordinance changes to a total of $2,119, $2,119, 919,921 elabon, and the Kester Block Maintenance Fund goes to $9,633.28. Does anybody want to see, we approved that contractor 25-5, and he wanted to advance payment of $5,000.
Now, the Rohr deal, that's different than what this said then.
Yeah, it has $20,500 in there, and the prepayment should have been $5,000 instead of $20,500.
So this, this is what you're correcting?
Yes, we're reducing it down to prepayment of $5,000.
Okay.
So I would entertain a motion for the ordinance as amended.
I'll make a motion that we.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, okay, roll call, please. Boss?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Six oh. Okay, and what is the workshop date that we decided to bug?
The Monday.
December 3rd.
There you go, December 3rd.
December 3rd?
And we never.
So next week.
At what time?
Yes.
December 15. 5:15, so just a reminder that that's our workshop date, December 3rd, 5:15, next Monday night. All right, we'll move along.
At what time, excuse me, Carla?
5:15.
5:15.
Move along to standing committee reports, street, water sewer, parks rec.
I got the street one really quick, sorry, I didn't get my hand up fast since I was putting a workshop in my calendar. Um, I was contacted a while back and I've been remiss in bringing it to council about an alley question, east of 15th Street between South and Jackson, I think you got the, probably the letter too from a resident down there, as far as, it's one of those dead end alleys that goes east and kind of butts up against that levee, used to be the spur railway that goes to Attention Envelope, it's, you could look at it, it looks like it's mostly grass, I don't know if there's any much of a base underneath it, but it's very soggy and when it rains, and there's I guess three families that access off that alley, and the resident down there had asked if we could do anything as far as bringing in some rock or doing something to help make it a little bit more accessible, because it's super soggy. I went down there after a rain and I didn't want to drive back there, so.
Do you know what street he's talking about?
Yeah, we saw the letter that he got, and after that, we did go down and put some more rock in to fill, because they did some, have some potholes in there, and I think it was, we did that today after we saw the, the letter.
Have you talked to him since?
I have not, and I haven't heard anything since, but I, I meant to bring it up at the following meeting and it got put in the wrong place.
But I think they're wanting more than rock.
I think, I think they want it built up a little bit, because I, I think the holes are filled, but I think they want maybe more of a permanent all-weather surface.
For an alley?
Yeah, well, they use it for a street, they don't use it, it's not really, it's not really, I mean, it is an alley, but, but they use it more as a street, it's where Samson's, Samson's and them live, so it's not really, they don't really use it as an alley, it's actually their houses are on this alley.
They front up to an alley? They front up to an alley?
Yeah, there's a couple places like that in town.
It's not that their garage is adjacent to alley, but their front of their house is on the alley?
Right.
Okay.
Virginia, Virginia Wicard and, and Samson, Maxine Samson, and I'm not sure who the other one is, but, so, so they're actually, they're, it would be, it's not like their, back of their house is up to it, so they're wanting more than gravel, because it's just the, the one, he, the guy that I talked to said that this little kid was riding along and actually wrecked their bicycle and bent the wheel on their bicycle because the pothole was too deep, you know, so it just, it just washes out right away, so therefore they need more than just rock put in there and then the rock washes out right away as soon as it gets, has, has rained, so.
Okay, you're going to go check it out and see what it looks like now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Water wastewater, parks rec, I guess parks rec, is that my library? Anyway, we're going to do library right now. I went to the library board meeting and they showed their attendance and they had, over six weeks, they had 1,100 people participating in their events, pretty amazing, so I just wanted you to know that our library is used heavily by our constituents, which is great, and, and they had it broken down into different age groups and different programs, so, good job, library. All right, cemetery and airport, police and fire, I guess drafting the ordinance, that was my question, is going to be Cindy. Finance and admin?
I have a question about maintaining keys, we're often buying keys almost every, every.
That is true, why are we buying keys every time?
And I noticed there's only one this time for the Kester House Museum, so do we have a handle on?
We are, I scheduled, once we got all our employees in place, I, in the middle of December, we are going to do, basically call all the keys back and make sure we have everything in hand, all the spares and everybody who's on the list and call all those people to bring their keys back so they can get them checked back out, that was already on the books, because I, yeah, I do understand the.
And our buildings, we do have, you know, like, we know which guys in the street department and which keys they have and which ones, all of those, our biggest issues are things like the Kester Museum, all those people that work there, whether we get that back. Art museum, we do not handle, that is handled totally by the MCAC, because we pay them and they, we do not even have a key to that.
I don't even think they use a key, they have a code.
They have a code, they do have a code, so that's, that's not our, but we do have names and who has what keys, unless it, the museum is really the hardest one because they've lost so many of them.
Yeah. All right, anything else?
No.
All right, moving along, there's appointments on page 45.
Hey, did you do administration and finance?
I did.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's all right.
I have one thing to ask, and that, that was if there was any way that we could kind of get a running record of how that $41,000 on this economic development plan is being spent, I think we should be informed as it's being used.
Okay, just a recap of how it's spent?
I think it's important, there's, there's a lot of people asking about that, because they, they thought we exploded when we did that.
Yeah, well, she can take a, keep a recap of the $41,000, we can send her that request. You guys, is that a consent of council to ask for just a request of how that money's spent? Sounds pretty simple, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch you when you said administration and finance earlier.
That's all right. Cindy, do you want to contact Jennifer Duffy and just tell her that the council requests that?
I think anytime we give somebody, any group, more than $500 they are supposed to give us, that's an audit thing, how they spend their money.
You have, did you point that out to her?
And that's why when you ask me on, on this contract for, so when admin and finance meets for the chamber, that's why they have to give us a detail of what they do with the money we give them, Marysville Main Street is to do the same.
Is it 500 or 250?
Marysville Main Street gives you a recap of how they spend their money?
They're supposed to, we give them, we give them $15,000.
I know, but I don't know if I've ever seen a recap of what they do, we get a recap from the convention in tourism.
Well, it's just like we ask the garden club.
You're supposed to, the audit.
And I think at that time it was 250, but is it 500?
That's why the chamber always brought that every year, Carla, that's why it's written.
They've brought what?
What they spend their money.
That report? Okay, so you'll just let Jennifer know that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, going back to appointments, Steve Boyden agreed to be on the, serve on the planning commission, Mike Stillwell agreed to be an alternate, I think everybody knows Steve Boyden because he ran for county commissioner, Mike Stillwell, he's lived here for 32 years, he's a retired controller for SKF, and his wife Jean is retired from the clinic, Community Memorial Clinic, as an office manager, have two sons, you guys all know Mike Stillwell?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I recruited him to be a volunteer tax repair.
Okay.
So he's, he's up in this there.
And then, okay, and then I listed out the zoning board of appeals and Tony has agreed to chair that. So I would entertain a motion to accept the appointment.
I move to expect, to accept the mayor's appointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Six oh, all right. All right, I don't know for any reason we have to have an executive session, are you guys okay? All right?
I really, Madam Mayor, I, I think it's kind of, it'd be nice if, because he hasn't been here for three months, maybe that, the next meeting, we get some answers and see this little gentleman sitting right here.
Okay, we'll request that happen.
I've already told him I was going to expect him next week.
All right.
All right.
It's December 10th meeting.
Okay, roundtable, I just went, I went down for a small business Saturday, Marysville was very busy, it was very good to see all those people out and about, people shopping, most people had bags, there's a very good, and a good effort put forth by the chamber and Main Street combined there, I don't know if anybody else was chamber, Main Street, yeah, and the parade is this Saturday, we are meeting on 5th Street or 4th Street? Where's the parade at? Fourth or Fifth, let's see, that wasn't on this minutes. I think it's at 10:30, so we meet about 10:15, do you guys want to throw candy? So should we have Austin pick us candy up for us? If not, they can always use it at City Hall, right? Okay, so 10:15, I'll make up some billboards, and, so we'll meet at 10:15 wherever the parade route is, whether it's 4th or 5th Street?
This is 4th.
4th, okay, meet at 4th, and it's at 10:30, right? The parade's at 10:30.
That part it doesn't.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's at 10:30, so 10:15, we'll be there, and I already shared about the library board, so I think that's all I have. Darlene?
I'd like to say a thank you to the advocate for putting an article about the housing and on the front page about the demolition and incentives.
Our incentive program ordinance, yeah.
So, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Gina?
Thanks to the street crews for the snow removal, crazy amounts of snow.
Yeah.
Love stealing mine every dang time.
Anything else? Terry?
Nothing.
Todd?
I second what Gina said.
Good job.
She did a good job, I think it was, I've had a lot of comments just tonight, people saying they thought it was impressive how quickly it was considering the workload, and I drove through a bunch of towns today and they did better than about anywhere else.
So, did they go out yesterday or just today?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
They started out last night?
Yeah.
I didn't leave the house.
Quick, clearing streets up.
They were cleaning it down.
All aggressive.
Yeah, they were out yesterday afternoon already, because they always go by our house right away, so we know.
Are you on the school route?
Yeah, State Street.
They were on our street, during.
On the highway to get to the hospital.
Yeah. During the snow, the boys thought that was cool, watching the flashing lights go by.
Diane?
I did check with Blue Valley Telephone, and Jada didn't get back to me, but I did ask her if there was possibility that maybe they might put the council minutes on, meetings on earlier than nine o'clock on Wednesdays and Sundays, but I haven't, I'll be over there tomorrow, so maybe I'll check with her again, she was going to text the, the man who is in charge, but she doesn't have anything to do with it.
And see if it's scheduling?
And see if there's a possibility of at least one of the times that we could do it earlier.
At eight, rather than nine?
Uh, yeah, well.
Or seven?
Or anytime, I mean, like last time when it was, we had a four-hour meeting, that means it wouldn't be over until one o'clock, which makes it pretty late to be, of watching.
Some people turn it on in the midnight, yeah, we hope that doesn't happen.
Right, especially for people that don't have computers, you know, if you have a computer, you can watch it on, on the video on the, on your computer, on the city website, but if you don't have a computer and you have to watch it on TV, that makes for an awful late night from nine to one, that's pretty long if you listen to it.
If they persevere?
Yeah, right, so anyway, I haven't heard back, so, but anyway, I did ask and maybe she said she would see what they could do about it, so, so there is a possibility that we might be able to do it earlier, so, anyway, that's.
Anything else?
Nothing.
No, nothing from you, Jason?
Aye, Jason.
The, with the recent email stuff going on, we went ahead and created everybody a new email address. I'm pretty, so, you have the information on your desk, if you already have a city email address that was issued to you by the city and want to still use that and feel comfortable with that, let me know, otherwise, we're going to use these city-created email addresses as your official city business to keep your personal separate from your city business stuff, so.
So when you send out an email, will it show our emails? That's what, that was one of their concerns, will it show?
I, I'm fixing that on the website, basically, once I figure out, sort of, if somebody had, if somebody wants to use their already issued email address, I'll set it up that way, so once I figure out what email address everything's going to, when you go and click on, let's say, Mayor Grun on the website, it'll take them to a separate page and give them a comment box, and, and they'll put in their name, their email address, and optional, they could put their phone number and whatever message they want and press submit without even knowing what email it's going to, and it'll go right to you.
And then what about when you send out the agenda on that email, will they, will it print or will it just say Carla Grun?
It, it'll have your email address, I mean, it'll.
I thought that's what we were trying to do, was to, so that that wouldn't be out there, because, because you have, like, when you send out the agenda, you have like 23 people you send it to.
There's no way around that portion of it, it's, we have to enter, unless we blind carbon copy everybody, but I don't know how that affects Comacore or Core, there we go.
Did, so did you, you talked to Blue Valley, there's no way to do it?
The, Blue Valley wouldn't have anything to do with it.
Who would?
It would be, that's how we use Outlook for our sending out emails, but that's, there's no changing it, it's, I mean, if we put you, the one thing we could probably do is put you all in a, in something on your name where it'll say Carla Grun or something like that, but there's nothing stopping whoever has, has an open records request from going, or not open records, but requests to see the agenda or what is on those emails to go and go, okay, that's Carla's email, there's no way around that.
Does that address all your concerns, Terry?
Yeah, I think it'll handle it.
Okay, so your, your key was that the city isn't giving out an email address for us, right?
Right, it won't, it won't be on the website, no.
And, but our phone numbers will still be?
I don't think they're right now.
We have to have some way for them to contact you, I think, so you're going to have to give us something.
Phone numbers.
Well, that's what I meant, so Gina, you have your email there, so do you want to change it to what?
My email's, well, this new email's fine.
Because that goes straight to Marysville?
No, it doesn't, it'll go straight, it'll go straight to her.
It's a new email address just for city stuff.
Now, I understand that they were, some people putting out our emails on Facebook back.
Somebody privately has your email and puts it out there.
Now, you're just saying, don't give people this email address, that's what you're trying to say, right?
Well, it should go through the city to come to us, and then, and then we should, you know, those emails, I think, probably should be kept.
They'll come straight to you, they don't come to us.
That's pretty.